You're as senile as I am.
She's out of town.
Big cold horse.
That's not a bad game. You ready? Alrighty. Four o'clock. Get the EDA meeting to order. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. I don't see it in there. We always do it. Don't let's do it. Yep, alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
President Mungy.
Here.
Vice President Matthews.
Here.
Member Furlong.
Here.
Council Representative Cole.
Here.
And staff and ex officio members present today are Executive Director Frandl and EDA Secretary Turey.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Cole, or what do we call you here?
Whatever I am. Just don't call me late for dinner.
That's right. No way. Representative, let's, okay. Second. A member Furlong, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes. Just asked through the... Do we want to go through anything, or just approve? What do we need? Any questions, anybody?
Questions?
I had none.
Okay, I haven't either. Alright. Do we need... So moved. Councilmember Furlong, or geez Louise. Member Furlong, thank you.
Long.
I'll be coming shortly, believe me. Second by...
Second.
Second. Councilmember Matthews.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's too many.
Sorry, Joe, you got demoted, man. You're a council member.
Alright. Yeah. Thank you very much. Alright, meeting open to the public. Anybody on Zoom Zoom? Zoom Zoom is on Zoom Zoom. Okay, we'll work our way... The items.
EDA budget and staffing for their, first up for our EDA discussions and action items, we have Mr. Winnick here, our Finance Director, to discuss.
Welcome, Dan.
So I guess I call it EDA President/Mayor.
I guess.
And EDA members.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me be here tonight. I know at the last EDA meeting, there were a number of questions that were related to the budget and staffing. And so I've got some material here that was handed out to you. And I'll kind of walk you through that kind of quickly, and then open it up for any questions that you may have. So you have a better understanding of the EDA levy and budget. So what was given to you before the meeting is the 2024 budget. So it's our format. It'll talk about description of the activities, department services, objectives, and priorities. We'll give kind of a financial impact on operating and capital. EDA has, does not have any capital requests. And then on page 94 of 97, that's there is the personnel summary. And I think the Community Development Director last week answered the question very well. Right now, in the 2024 budget, there's a point one of an FTE, basically the allocation of the city manager's time to the EDA. The Community Development Director is allocated at 50%. The Administrative Assistant is at 20%, and the Deputy Clerk is at 0.1%. The Community Development Director's position at point five was established mid-year of 2022 by the former city manager. And there is an attachment of the actual document. It was on April 5th of 2022. And adding that Community Development Director's position. And at that time, the former city manager allocated that the funding for that position would be 50% EDA, 30% from the city, and 20% from HRA. Also recommended increasing the city manager's time above the 10%, but we've held that at the 10%, which is in the budget. So that's how, and then the rest of the percentages were there prior to my arrival in 2021. So that's kind of how they were established. I know there was some discussion on if there was a different allocation to come. So there was two kind of schools of thought or discussions that took place at your last EDA meeting. One, I think, the EDA President/Mayor had brought up if this was a commission versus if it was the EDA authority. So an EDC versus the EDA, would you be charging or allocating any staff time? Because what the EDA President/Mayor was referring to is that we do have some other commissions, and there isn't staff that's allocated them. The major difference between that is that the other commissions really don't have their own fund. Like, the art and culture doesn't have its own fund. The EDA is basically its own entity. And so there is, based upon the levying authority that it has, there is an avenue to charge for services, and really, there should be the charging of services and allocation of time. Now, whether these percentages are really correct is something that we can look for in the future. A piece that you have to have and keep in mind is that if you were to change the allocation, the only place that really could go, or it to be redistributed to, would be the General Fund. And the General Fund is going to have a levy impact on that. So just for your reference point, a total of 135,000 is in the 2024 budget. If you were to switch all of that allocation for all of the positions into the General Fund, and I know the Mayor and Councilmember Cole know from our budget discussion that approximately $71,000 equates to a 1% levy increase in the General Fund. So you would be looking at almost a 2% levy increase if you were to take out all of the staff allocation out of the EDA and put it into the General Fund. So if it's something that you want to do, my recommendation would be that you would do it over time. In other words, start to reduce some of that allocation and take a number of years to do it so that the General Fund could absorb some of that allocation. Again, I don't believe it's appropriate to remove all of the allocation, but from what I've picked up on some of the discussion at the EDA, I think you're thinking that the Community Development Director at 50% is a little high. And I think there's a desire to look at more of a, I'm gonna say, a consultant service to provide some of those services for the EDA in helping attract and retain economic development in businesses within the city, which you certainly can do. I can stop for a question.
Well, that, now compared to the HRA, when you look at that, is it broke down the same way? That's what I was trying to figure out, the difference between how the HRA and the EDA, when it comes to breaking down with staff and everything else. That was my...
There is a breakout of staff for the HRA, obviously. Again, based upon that, the memo, the HRA, I think the city manager is probably pretty close to 10% in the HRA. The Administrative Assistant, I believe, is 20%, and I believe there's 10% of the Deputy Clerk. So really, the differentiation is the Community Development Director's time. And in the EDA, it's at 50%, and in the HRA, it's 20%. And again, that was what was recommended and approved by City Council on April 5th of 2022.
When the position was... Grabbing out another bucket, I was just trying to compare the difference between that, the authority, and what the actual committees do.
Yeah. So there is staff allocation to HRA also.
Perfect. That was my question.
So that's something for you to consider moving forward in the future if we want to start to drop down that allocation. As far as levy is concerned, right now, and we've been doing it the same amount since 2022, so 2022, 3, and 4 are all the same, and it's been a levy of approximately $201,000. We do budget $2,000 in 2024 for interest income. And then you have expenditures budgeted at just underneath $200,000. The biggest component of that is your personnel costs at approximately 135,000. And then you have contractual services at $54,000, and I will get back to that contractual services in a second. And then there's also transfers. There's a transfer of $10,000 from the EDA that goes to the General Fund. The HRA has a transfer of $20,000 that goes from the HRA to the General Fund.
Was that 50% for the budget, for the... Was that including 50% of the time also? I mean, is it the reason why it's 50% coming out of the EDA? Was it supposed to be 50% of that position going towards the EDA?
Are we talking about the community development position?
Yeah.
That's 50, that 50% again was what was recommended and approved by City Council when they established the Community Development Director position.
I get that, but was it designed to be 50% of that person doing the EDA then? Because that's why it's 50% of the...
I definitely, I definitely think that, yeah. I mean, that's not really why...
That's what I'm looking at, the time that's actually been put in and what the EDA is being charged for it.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, if you look at the memo, that, to me, is clear that that was the intent, that that Community Development Director would be 50% allocated. In addition to that, the existing city manager at that time was anticipating that they would be spending more than 10% of their time on the EDA. And so there was a recommendation that even that percentage be increased. So right now, in your 2024 budget, you do have approximately $49,000 that's in a general contract consulting services. So you do, right now, have the budget that's been approved to actually go out and hire a consultant. And that's where in the past that there has been services that have been purchased. So you do have some funds that are available today in moving, you know, forward into 2024. When we start to get into the development of the 2025 budget, I will be coming back and meeting with the EDA to see what are some of the changes that you want in your budget. In the past, I've worked with the EDA President, Robert. And so he would give me his line item budget that he wanted and making sure that we were in agreement with that before it was ever presented to the City Council. So we will be doing that later this year. And then another piece for you to, two other pieces for you to be aware of is that, one, I know that there's another item that's on tonight's agenda. And I know that you were talking about it in the past at different EDA meetings. And that's relating to the possibility of providing some sort of either a loan or a grant for some infrastructural improvements. So what I've included in here is your balance sheet as of the end of last year, which will show you that the EDA currently has $479,000 in cash that's available. So there is money available in the EDA that would be, you know, that you certainly could fund some sort of a grant or loan program if you said... Yeah, it's about the fifth to the last page. It's after the budget. It'll give you a chance to go. There's just a one-page...
Fine print?
Yeah. Comes off the encode system, yes. Fine print. Does everybody see that?
No. Oh, there we go. Here we go, got it. Pass the word, just right past the words.
Yep. Yep, that's exactly it, yeah.
You're saying we can use part of that fund to fund some sort of...
Yes.
Vehicle to subsidize, not subsidize, to use for a facade program or something?
Right, to, yeah, to supplement the program, yep. So the EDA does have funding that's available for that. The only requirement to utilize that would be that there would have to be some sort of action to appropriate those funds and put it into a budget so that they could be spent for whatever purposes that you decide on. And then I just kind of wanted to let you know the last couple of pages, and there's, I think, three pages that are, yes, they are the fine print. And what that is, is it's the market values for pay 2024. But just before that is Minnesota State Statute 469.107, which limits the amount of levy that the EDA can levy for. And so it's 0.01813% of the estimated market value. So what I've done is, if you take that percentage and you multiply it, and I've highlighted it, North St. Paul's total estimated market value for payable 2024, which is $1,476,727,600. If you multiply that, you could, for 2025, levy up to 260, approximately $267,000 versus the 201 that you're doing today. So that's another component that you can look at. Obviously, if you raise levy, it does have an impact, you know, on the taxpayers. But it's information for you to be aware of as you're making your decisions and as we start to look at the 2025 budget.
We've always done the maximum limit.
Yeah, we had, we kind of stopped that in '22. So '22, 3, and 4 have been held steady, and then market values, obviously, have gone crazy until this, until what we're gonna see in pay 25. They finally flattened out, but we've seen some significant increases in market values.
Has it been 201 last several years?
Yeah. So there is the opportunity to levy more money, which gives you more money in your budget on an annual basis. You do have some cash right now, you know, that you could utilize for some programming. You do have the budget and the budget authority right now, up to about $49,000 for consulting services. So you definitely could utilize that for, I think your intention was maybe to hire a consultant. And I think in the packet of information, not my packet, but the original packet for, I think, there's a list of potential economic development consultants that Brandy put together. I think there's nine of them. And in, obviously, there may be other ones. I'm not going to say that this is all-inclusive. But there's some very familiar names that are there that have done an excellent job in economic development, not just here in this city, but in other cities around in the Twin Cities. So there are, there are many options for you. So with that, I'm kind of, from what I got from the last meeting, I think I've hit on the points, but certainly want to give an opportunity for any of the members. If you have any other additional questions on the budget that I could help out with, I certainly will.
I think the biggest question I had was, how much was coming out of EDA for the community development person piece? And how does that tie in with the EDA? Because I think, you know, the city manager, it's kind of your department of, how does that community development piece and EDA piece, because they kind of work together. So as you, you know, if we're gonna go to some sort of consulting or whatever, but I think the pieces, community development and EDA piece. I don't know if we do have a, if we do go to a contract or not. It just depends on what kind of person you get, you know, how well-rounded.
Exactly.
Both departments.
And my opinion is, I think you just hit the nail on the head right there. I think your outgoing Community Development Director, you know, strength isn't planning, isn't in the economic development realm. But it's kind of like the same thing in some of the discussion that you had last week. Do you move to a, you know, do you keep it as an EDA authority or EDA commission? And part of it was, your decision was, why don't we staff ourselves completely up as far as members? And then maybe going forward, you may change that course. Same thing here. I think before you go and hire a consultant, let's see what the talent pool shows for the community development position that's, you know, that's open. And there may be somebody who comes out of it that has a lot of strength in the economic realm. And if that's the case, that may be your answer instead of a consultant. But you always have the opportunity to supplement that. Because there are, you know, I know in the past, the EDA utilized the St. Paul Port Authority. And they have a lot of strength and a lot of expertise. So you may end up wanting to supplement that from time to time, too.
And that was the question is, you know, that's why I asked 50% of the time was, you know, how close was that? We don't, you don't do any, when it's multiple, there's no like job codes or anything like that? People do as far as when you do timeshare, anything like that?
Not under her time sheet. There are some departments that do that, but that's not one of them.
So what I've talked about, some other ones, that those are two really opposite. So it'd be pretty hard to get somebody that could probably be on both ends of it. So we should probably, which is easier to get people in when we need it compared to the job. So to me, that would be, you know, is it easier to bring in these great resources we have here and focus, you know, on that as far as community development, as that role? And I think it's gonna be pretty tough to try to find one that can do both very easily. And I think time-wise, bandwidth-wise, I don't know what it was, you know, for her before to try to split the two. Was it realistic or unrealistic?
Yeah, I mean, she had a strong planning background for sure, but I don't think the EDA was as much on her radar previously. But she picked it up well.
Let's make it successful for the person that we're looking for. We don't want to have them, you know, figure out the skill that we really need to focus on and then decide if it makes sense to have that one person do both or break it up and say, you know, do a little more outsourcing when it comes to things we need on the EDA. Does that make sense? Is the community development, I'm sure that's a very important part on your, under your radar, isn't it?
Yes.
Would it be easier for you to have that skill of the, of the leaning towards the community development or the EDA?
In my realm, the community development, but we'll see what kind of experience they bring under their belt as well, but, yeah.
Well, that's why I think we have to have that realistic going into this.
Indeed.
Because we don't want to change anybody ourselves or them.
I agree.
Something that's not realistic. Alright, thank you very much. Any questions, anybody?
Oh, yeah, you're not done. Go ahead.
Oh, shoot!
Actually, I'm only kidding. Yeah, I guess I'm looking to the historian of the group more for my questions than I am for you, Dan, but thank you. Is it safe to assume, I take the 134, knock 50% off of that, or half of that to get to 67? Would that be the 50% that it would represent for community... I mean, is it rough math? Is it 50% of the salary? Is it 50% of the funding budgeted? That's my budget question.
50% is of the total costs of that position.
Okay, of the position, not of what we have budgeted.
Right, so it is 84,000.
Okay, thank you. So, because, I mean, I'll look to Member Furlong. In my tenure on the EDA, the EDA has always looked for, has wanted, and I believe had at one point in time a full-time EDA person. That individual, that position went away. And the EDA has been championing, championing to get someone back on board in a full-time, in a full-time role. And during COVID, five positions were eliminated within the city. And in order to help gain the community development position, the directorship back, it was combined with money from the EDA to help fund a portion of that. But back to your original question, Mr. President Mayor. Yes, it was the intent that 50% of that position's time be focused, EDA-related. Don't know if that was realistic or not, to be honest with you. But at least it was a way to fund the position. So it's, of my opinion, going forward, I would like to hire an outside consultant and not have the Community Development Director be solely responsible for bringing business into the city, advertising for the city, being the cheerleader for the city, but recognizing we still may have to fund a portion of that to make the overall budget balance. So, you know, that's my opinion. I don't know of the 84,000 reflected what, you know, there's nine names, nine organizations here on the list that we can take a look at that may offer all or portions of what we're looking for. But I guess that's, that's the overall impact, is if we, if the EDA decides to go in a different direction, that will then impact the funding for personnel. My assumption is that will impact the funding for personnel and what we have to do from a levy. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. And that's where my suggestion would be to ratchet it down over a few years. So maybe, you know, this year, we knock it down to 35%. And then, you know, get it down, and maybe it's totally eliminated after three years or whatever, you know, is decided. But yeah, that's how I would plan to try to, try to have it work out.
I saw you talking about the city manager's portion. Oh, sorry, Brian, you're here.
I'm just talking out loud.
I think for finance questions, I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Alright. Would you like me to stick around for your next topic on facade improvement program?
If you could, it'd be great.
You got an eye for it?
No, I think it's a fantastic idea that you're having that discussion on, too.
Dan, can I hold you up for one second? I just want to finish up that Item A as here, because part of that was the DJ budgeting, thank you, and then, but the staffing part of it. So I just wanted to kind of finish that part off. So back on April 11th, the mayor and I met with Troy Woods, and we met with Peter Gigliardi. And we met with Peter Gagliardi, both good candidates. Troy's had experience in the city with, working with Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. I guess his children are involved in that. We had, he's also a board member of the Independent School District 622, as far as involvement with the kind of the community. Peter Gagliardi, of course, he's in business with a startup with him and his brothers. So they have that business experience that we've been looking for. Have had a conversation with Brandon from Max. He is interested. I'm going to set up a meeting with him to get together. He just wants to talk about it in more depth. Also called Stacy from Sweeties Candies. Asked her about her interest in it. They have, well, the Sweeties, they have the coffee shop in back there now. They also have that appliance business. But she has also expressed interest in that as well. So two of them we've interviewed, more to come on the other two. But I guess the question is, do we, are we just looking at getting three more people for a total of seven members? Or kind of what your direction may be?
Seven was what we had before, so yeah. I know a couple other ones, because we reached out to. I was going to go down to Sandberg, talk to them. I haven't had a chance to get down there yet, just to get some of the other businesses around too as well. So I think we got a good start. And we told them that we're gathering information. So I know we, Brandon was able to reach out, so we're able to do that. So I think, I think we're in a good position to get some good quality candidates.
Yeah, I think so, too. So that's where we're left off, anyway.
Yep.
Any other questions with that? Any more suggestions of people to talk to that you guys had in mind, or?
Do you want to have a timeframe, so we can say we need to get back? Because I know we discussed, we told them we're still going through the process. So we should probably set a date for when we can be to go, to get going on this, as far as that?
Yeah, we can set up interviews with those two people as well. And we can report back. Initially, we were going to, we're staying on month-to-month meetings until we get a full crew and then potentially look at the quarterly meetings, but, so we can just report back at the next meeting.
So maybe by, hopefully next month, maybe we'll have a couple, we'll be able to have our candidates together?
Oh yeah.
Yep, so let's have a vote or the, to go through for the next meeting, then.
Sounds good, yep.
EDA function the same way as the rest of the commissions and the committees? The mayor appoints and picks, interviews and picks? Is the EDA any different, I guess is what I'm trying to ask?
That they're not, to my understanding, it commissions or authorities.
Okay. I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to ask.
Sure, good question. By next meeting, we should have.
Yep, I agree.
All right. It has to go for other coun, still has to go, everything has to go for other council.
It would.
So the next, so we have our council meeting and the first one here. When is the, where's the second one in May?
Seventh, the first one, so.
Seventh and 21st.
Twenty-first.
Seventh, where we at now? Okay, so one month from, all right. Timeframe, I'm just trying to think, I'll be, I don't necessarily have to be, but I might not be back yet after my hip replacement, so. You can just come to my house, maybe? Swing on over?
Should be walking the same day.
Yeah, I'm not playing with the full.
Running.
Yeah, running, there you go. So we'll see how it feels, but yeah, the 21st. So I just, because we have to hit the, to remind me, too, is, we get the candidates together, we present them to the council, then they're voted on. So what meeting do we want to have it there for that?
Can you just, go ahead.
We haven't been having the EDA meetings at the regular time here. So.
Our next one's this.
Yeah, what's the next normal one?
It's the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in May.
May.
So if we kept that and we get busy on bringing some people in and talking with them, then we can make a recommendation here and then take it to the next council meeting.
Correct, that's what I was hoping to do.
And that's usually just putting the consent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, so let's do that. So I just want to plan to make sure people know what we're doing.
Perfect.
Okay.
And that'll be four o'clock, not three o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Four to the four.
Four to the four.
Does that work for you?
And that'll be my last meeting before I go.
I'll send you off.
I leave the next day.
You can wear your gear.
Don't tell me.
Don't tell me.
And not that it matters, but I'm traveling that week. So I'm not going to be, I won't be here either, but that, but you will be.
I will be here.
See you tomorrow.
Sounds good, all right.
All right, so now moving on to the facade improvement program. We can briefly touch on this. We had the program once upon a time. The facade improvement program, grant program, established to support and encourage small business to reinvest in the downtown business district. The program back then, I think we did matching grants to the small businesses. There were two options here with the grant amounts. There was ideas of just a mini grant that would potentially a forgiven type grant, or it would be a facade improvement grant where there would be a match type program. I was talking with Dan earlier and we're thinking that more of a skin in the game idea, it might be a better idea of moving forward, having people invest into their own improvements as well for us to do a type of a match program. And as we discussed before, the target area was the downtown properties on Seventh Avenue. Couple of things that were cut out of it, where if they were going to only do signage, that we weren't going to be allowing that. It would have to be part of a group of things that they were going to be making improvements on. What would you like to add to that, Dan?
I think, I think city manager Brian, I think you hit on good components to it. And then I think you and I had discussed that, you know, that the grant payments would be made on a reimbursement basis, so there wouldn't be the upfront. And then we kind of talked a little bit about the whole application and the application process. And I think we were, city manager and myself were in agreement that there should be an application. You may want to, you know, not just clear and color photos of the current building facade, but if there's any renderings or anything of what it may look like after the project is complete. And then the processing component to it. We kind of had a discussion on this, and this is really up for you to discuss. So many of these items that are here through the application, which would be reviewed by city staff, are really subjective. And the award of points, then therefore is subjective and which could be challenged by applicants. And so it may be more beneficial to have the application, the information, and then schedule applicants to come and present their ideas right in front of the EDA itself. And then the EDA would have, you know, up until their next meeting to actually approve or disapprove of the, of whatever that plan was. And so that was kind of just our thoughts on to that component to it. But it really would, as far as the grant, not have the, as it's so-called, the two tiers, the mini grant with just, I guess, no matching requirement, that it would all be required to have a matching requirement. And then you would set kind of, I guess, an upper dollar limit into what the EDA would be willing to match to somebody else. And again, the city's or the EDA's component wouldn't be given to, to the owner until all the work and proof of invoices and payment has been shown to the city. So that was kind of our thoughts of what we kind of, kind of looked at the program. But, and then there may be some, I guess, you may see a different vision for some of the properties downtown and you may actually want to develop some, I guess, I'll call them standards, that you may want to see in the facades. But I think it's a great program.
Thank you.
It's kind of laid out. I think what maybe next steps would be, if you're in agreement with that. I know this is still in draft form. We can sit down with Dan and kind of streamline this a little better. Like you said, the points program just doesn't work great, subjective, you know, layout. You know, like them turning in receipts and showing that the invoice has been paid for, you know, things along that such, more of the details. And we can bring back a more streamlined draft, if you will, and then come back for final approval and then go from there.
Sounds good.
Does that work?
I think having skin in the game is definitely the way to go.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Are we looking at an interest rate or anything that we're going to be charging them for?
Well, the, right now, how it's looked at is, it's not a loan, it's a grant. So it would just be, it just has to be a matching grant. And again, you know, first of all, the work has to be in line with what the EDA agrees to. And then it has to be to the EDA's satisfaction upon completion. And then there has to be proof of invoices and payment made. And then the city would match up to a certain dollar amount. I mean, there actually has to be a grant agreement that would actually be established. Our attorney would have to help us out with that. But yeah.
I think that's a good point.
Wouldn't have an interest rate, it would be, no payback.
Just a grant, okay.
Well, and that's just one of the.
That's just one of the, yeah.
So, I mean, you could do just that, to where you could make it a grant. You could do a low-interest type loan, if you'd like. There, we do have options with it, so.
Well, I know if it's a loan, it'd be a nightmare for finance department to be dealing with collecting and.
That would be a little bit of a challenge, but, I mean, if that's, if that was the direction that the EDA desires, then we would figure a way to make it happen, but.
I'm not 100% positive, but I know that there's like banks that will help with that end?
Yes, and we, yeah, yep, there are, yes.
There are, okay. And they would do all the paperwork, they would do all the collection and all that, representing the city.
Yeah, they usually do it for, yeah, and they usually do it for a small nominal fee, but yes.
It's just an option for them.
Would it be out of line to have a set amount, that if we did do it in a grant, that then if they paid the grant back plus the set amount to the city? I mean, is that an option, or is that?
Certainly, certainly is an option that you could do, yeah. I mean, you could set it, you know, you just have to, it can't be too high of a, resulting in too high of an interest, if there, you wouldn't call it necessarily an interest. It would be a flat fee that they would end up paying. You just wouldn't want it to be such a high amount that if you calculated it as an interest rate, it would be 25% or something, yeah. Because there are rules against that, but yeah, you could do that.
Just different options.
Well, there's a lot of, maybe, should we look at other cities, how they program it? I know Old Town's got a grant program or interest program, and I think they work with a bank.
And some people, yeah, they step back and allow the bank to do all the work, credit union, what have you. There's different options.
So maybe set a dollar amount, how much you want to take out of that $400,000? Maybe set aside, you know, $200,000 for kind of a starter amount, 100,000?
And do you set aside a single maximum for borrower of 10,000 or, you know?
Well, if it's a grant, we're going to have to have a max cap on that.
I don't know. We're not doing anything with the money right now anyways, so I'm not following why we need to set money aside right now. I think that's.
We kind of set up the program.
We want to keep some money in the account.
We know how much.
But where's the money going right now, though? The money is in the account.
But it's not earmarked to the facade program. I'm just thinking, do we set a limit for earmarking some of the money?
I think it'd be a good idea.
But we're not earmarking anything else, at least.
No, I.
We're not talking about any other topics where money's going out right now.
Right, right, but, you know, to kind of give a little bit more information, you know, I think what, you know, EDA member Furlong is referring to is that we need to keep a certain amount of money just for cash flow purposes. And usually what I utilized onto that is, just like with the general fund, and the EDAs in the same boat, so is the HRA, because they're a levy. We get our, we get our first levy dollars from the property taxes, not until the end of June. So you're approximately six months. So if you take your budget, which is $200,000 right now, you probably need to hold 50% of that to pay the bills for half of the year. So there's 100,000 that really is off the table. So that leaves a remainder. But what he, what I think council member Furlong is really trying to get at is that the program should only have, we need to designate how much you're willing to put towards this program. That it's not a limit, limitless pot. If it's $200,000, or it could be the remainder, the, you know, 379,000, but.
So we know as an EDA right now, just throwing out a number, we know what businesses would want to partake in this? We don't know that.
Well, we didn't have an active program, but I have had one business approach that have, that's a.
I'm sure there's several businesses.
I think so, too.
A lot of businesses that would want to partake in this.
Sure.
I would think that we would want to find, get that information. That's important.
Yep.
We have a, we have a number right now of what, 400?
79, cash?
479 in cash.
479 in cash.
Crack 100,000 from there, because you don't want to go below that, because you need the cash flow yourself through the first six months. So 379, are, you know, are you willing to give all 379 to this program? If there was that much of a need, that would be the question. Or do you establish that, you know, $200,000 towards this program? Again, it can always be amended.
Right.
If the interest is that great, you certainly could amend that and churn that up to $300,000 if you so desire. Or look to the future years to increase that dollar amount. Again, there's a lot of details, whether it's, you know, a loan payment, whatever the case may be, but. So, so if you were just looking at, let's just say, sake of conversation, if you were to say $250,000 and you were going to have a max cap of the match grant, would be the, the EDA's contribution in a grant would be 25,000. So it'd be $50,000 per, you know, total project would have to be verified and proof. You could do 10. If there's a higher demand, I mean, that's something that, you know, the, you know, the EDA and the city, for that matter, can look at. Because the city can, you know, look at that, look at that, too. So there's other options that are open for you in the future. But you can amend it.
So my thought is to get a number, go out.
A maximum.
A maximum that we're willing to give out for the program. You know, it could be the 200,000, whatever. And then, once we reach that point, then we can decide if we want to increase it or, you know, stop it, do we max it at 200,000?
And then we get an interest out there and see what people are interested in. Then we divide that up to see what we can do with that money. You know, maybe it's only 20, you know, 10 people interested, or five, whatever. So then we can figure out how big the projects are, but, you know, have a maximum.
But it gives us a number that we're working towards.
I think another important part, though, as well, is, so you go out and you find out if there's interest. Well, okay, what's your parameters, then? I mean, are you willing to give $500 and it's a $50,000 project? Then really, I'm not concerned or not very interested in the program. But if it is a larger number and it's a reasonable amount that they're willing to put into their business as well. So it's just trying to have some kind of parameters when you're going out to approach some of the business owners to say, is this something like this more in your wellhouse for doing some improvements on the building? for doing some improvements on the building? I think we might be a little better off having some idea of what we're going to be offering a bit. I mean, I get the idea.
Yeah, it's a loan or if it's a grant, too. There's two different things besides that, yeah.
Indeed.
And can we do mixture of both?
We can do whatever you'd like to do, whatever we decide.
Yeah, they need more than a certain amount, then it becomes a loan type of thing, or grant?
Maybe let's look at other cities, how they have other programs.
That's a good idea.
And kind of model something that they have, it gives, at least gives us an idea of demand for them, and.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
Sound good? You good?
Good to me.
I'm good, man.
Okay.
As long as you're good, I'm good.
All righty.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan.
Before our next meeting, we got to get a cover for your microphone, don't we?
Yeah.
Every time you get it, it's.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
I can just go.
Nothing else, I'll take my sock off and I'll put it over there.
Do, I'd be, I'd be with.
Thanks.
All right, item C is EDA project updates. Have a list here, I think it's worth kind of going over them since it's been a while. Item A on the list is 2579 7th Avenue, that's a site between Sidewinders and Fallen Angel Tattoo. Crossroad Properties provided a listing agreement to market the site. City Council voted that down, the listing agreement, and instead directed staff to have the property appraised. The property was appraised in December of '23, and the estimated market value is $110,000. No further action has been taken on the site. I think the idea was if, you know, some business came in town, was, wanted to know what properties we had available, we would make it available to them, and then we're having control of the site.
Correct. I mean, out of value, so, perfect.
Article 7, also the Lily Development Project. Construction is underway, I think they're working on the third floor already, it's going fast with those prefab walls. Yeah, it's going good. And the plan to be completed and open for move-in by fall of this year. Developer Jim Laval intends to rent the space on the northwest corner of 7th Avenue and Margaret, the old OSI building, which is Tracy Luther's building, has a temporary leasing office. Item C is Delaware Place Platte, 2329 17th Avenue. Doug Anderson, Anders Built LLC entered into a contract for private development with the city to build 10 townhomes units on this city-owned property, their property now, but at the northeast intersection of 17th Avenue and Delaware Avenue. Preliminary plant and planned unit development application was submitted on March 26 of '24 for staff review. The planning commission will hold a public hearing on the proposed May 2nd, on that, on proposal on May 2nd, and the city council is tentative scheduled to act on May 21st.
Exciting.
Item D, Margaret Street Commons, across the street here from City Hall. In late '23, staff engaged surveyor to replat the development site to combine the development lots, separate them from the parking lot, and establish necessary utility easements. The plating process was completed with the final plat approval by city council on March 19th of this year. The city-owned parcels were conveyed to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority at that time. The property was appraised and estimated market value of $230,000. There's a potential interest, I don't know if that's released or not, but from another developer in town here. Item E, the Taco Bell site, formerly Oil Can Henrys. The site plan was approved in the fall of '23, develop a Taco Bell at the site of the former Oil Can Henrys at 2371 McKnight Boulevard. A billing permit has been applied for and will be issued once all the plan improvement contingencies have been satisfied, one remaining, the recording of the easement agreement. Item SF is the Reflex Medical and River of God Site. Back in the fall of '23, staff reached out to DSGW Architects at EDA's direction for proposals to repair a facility, space analysis for River of God Church. Thought behind the activity is to understand the space needs for the church, that the EDA may assist the church to potentially relocate, so that Reflex Medical may expand to the east onto the church site. Staff also had a meeting with Pastor Dennis McGreen of River of God Church, seeking authorizations from their organization to move forward with the study, if authorized by the EDA. Pastor McGreen has indicated that the congregation has decided not to move forward with the study at this time. The congregation prefers to keep discussions internal to their organization at this time. Staff reached out last fall, but was unsuccessful in connecting with Kevin Fuller with Reflex Medical, to try to understand if there were alternatives to making the company's expansion needs. No new updates since that time. Pine Tree Center, fire inspectors went out there, went through the property about a year ago to make some minimum requirements. Where being addressed, fire sprinkler system and annual tested and inspected properly, property, properly secured, and exterior maintenance items. The property owner was also given a list of items to be completed on the inside that have not been completed, missing ceiling tiles and other items that could be addressed with a new tenant. There's nothing at this time that would lead the enforcement officers to consider it a hazardous building or condemned. Item H, which is part of that building, the Pizza Factory, no official updates on the business, however, there is news that, the business Facebook page, that a potential sale is in the works, and they are looking for a site to relocate to. Did you have anything further you want to add to that?
So Cal at Pizza Factory, he had open-heart surgery here, I believe, April 1st, and he is active, actively looking to sell the, sell the, the business. And he did have a potential person that I think is still in negotiations.
Gotcha.
And relocation, don't know.
How's he doing?
If that's an option for him or not.
Yeah.
Depending on who buys, who buys the business.
Have you heard all he's doing?
Heard, heard it went well.
Good.
Doing good.
Good, good. Other priorities, identify staff needs for EDA and explore options, kind of what we went over earlier. Continue to develop the facade improvement program after discussions today. Marketing strategy, utilizing EDA's promotional video prepared last fall by Open Window Productions, which is on our website, is also on our YouTube site, so it is out there. And potentially update to the downtown design manual. This was adopted by the city council in 2005 per Resolution 05-143. The manual lists standards are guidelines for architectural, lighting, landscaping, and signs downtown. It has been suggested by the EDA that the design guidelines might be prohibitive to new development and investments downtown. And that is it for that.
Thank you very much.
So item D was just the 2024 EDA meetings. As discussed earlier, we've been going month-to-month, which we will keep with our regular schedule for next month, on the second Tuesday of the month in May.
May 14.
May 14.
At 4:00 PM.
Perfect. All right, any updates from staff?
I'd like to just kick us off.
I, I do have some questions. Listed in the packet, there were nine businesses that offered, EDA, don't know exactly what in-depth they, they offered, but as consultants, I don't know if they were, you know, full-on or, or partial, or whatever. We really just kind of brushed through that, really didn't address it during today's meetings. Is it the intent of the EDA to hang tight until we are fully, fully staffed, for lack of a better word, at seven, and have, you know, a new director in place? Or do we want to move forward and start to talk to some of these organizations and see, I mean, the electronic copies are thread to each one of the organizations? Or do we want to, you know, start to, interview might be the, the wrong word to use, but have conversation? I mean, are we, are we ready to move forward, or we just want to, do we want to sit on pause?
Well, last time we discussed, we were talking about getting up to full staff and then working here, full council, or grouping and digging in.
Okay. The only reason I bring it up is, we as an organization haven't done anything to promote our city in probably six months.
Sure.
And I'm very concerned that the longer we sit, the further behind we're going to be. So can we run a parallel path?
Can I ask if, so, I mean, we did the promotional video, we do have it online, our YouTube, what more are you thinking about when you say that we don't?
I want somebody out there finding people to go into Article 7. I want somebody to develop that lot. I need somebody banging on doors and attending franchise meetings, talking with other developers.
That's kind of what it was.
There's a networking group out there, we just don't have a body in it. And that's where I'm thinking these people do.
And I think, if I may suggest, that, you know, behind the scenes here, we can start gathering some information, especially off the known commodities that we have actually worked with in the past, and Port Authority, Baker Tilly, and at least get some ideas and some directions on kind of what they do, and at least bring that information back.
Staff would be still be looking into it.
Correct, yes.
That's the main part.
Yeah.
And that's a piece, because that, that's a parallel path in my world.
I agree with you.
Yeah, that's, that's where my head was.
Okay, that's where I was, because I know you were mentioning you were looking into that kind of stuff.
Yep, yep.
Perfect.
Are, are we not going down the path of looking to replace, like, having a new community development director?
We are for community development director, but not for EDA, probably, is what we're.
Or may have some EDA responsibilities, or.
Correct, yep.
But priority will be development.
Not the 50 hours or what we discussed.
Correct, yeah, because there wasn't 50, yeah, exactly.
There wasn't 50.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If I had a contract, we would get that, 100%, working just for the EDA.
Well, I would think the resources that you guys have, Brian, and working with, with past companies, you're going to, you're going to know a good fit, like, in the time we start bringing in outside, third parties, it's, it's got to be the right, right fit. I think that's where we got to just trust and lean on, on you guys and staff.
And these companies, I would imagine, you know, once we're in their envelope, per se, then, you know, when they have those conversations, bring up our name, you know, what do we have to offer? They would know what property we have, and, you know.
We have to get that from Jim, too. He needs to specify, because, you know, what you, we just heard now, they're talking fall opening up, so that's probably our clock's going to start ticking. What does he have for space? How big space? Does he say, I got this much space, I can divide it this much? Or do, you know, how is he going to want to jockey with walls, interior, and things like that? So we need to get something from him fairly soon, and say, okay, what does it look like when we start reaching out to these businesses? What spaces are you offering? What different sizes, and can they be?
Indeed, with those nine work-lives spaces on the bottom, and he did say the availability of removing walls and making it bigger, and, you know, we can get that information.
Just want to make sure that he was, you know, like, is there a maximum? Like, we can only go two over, because then we got a structure wall, or, you know, something like that, too, just to kind of get what we can jockey for, for space with.
Indeed.
That was one.
Okay.
Um, the property, Pine Tree Center. We talked a little bit about the Pizza Factory, and it's public information that it's, that he's looking to sell, or, and or has sold and and or is relocating. Do we want to contact the owner of that building again? We contacted him, I think, a year ago, and a dollar amount was thrown out. Do we want to start those conversations again to see what he looks? He's going to lose his only tenant, his last tenant.
I've tried. I reached out two weeks ago, left him a voicemail, I'm not here back, I will call again. I do have his number, so.
Okay. If you said, if you said that, I apologize, I didn't.
No, no, I didn't, yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, I didn't.
Are they up to date with everything they needed to do after the last inspection? Are they responding to you, or they responding to the city to continue down the path to make sure they're building safe?
And I will follow up, I was over there, he came up in a conversation today, but I, I will check back in with them as well.
I think we need to make sure that, you know, it's, it's still, even though it's three, almost empty, we still have to be able to make sure it's, you know, within our code. I think we need to stay on that.
Yep, and they, and they were, and they have. They did get their sprinkler system up and going for where it needed to be, but, yeah, more conversations need to be had with him.
Thank you.
And I guess I would just like to make sure we take more of a proactive approach to what potentially may go in there, as opposed to find out, you know, is he looking to sell, isn't he looking to sell? And we're, you know, very similar to what we did with the little building, can we bring somebody else in to help him develop? Can we, you know, take the proactive approach to what that's going to look like, as opposed to, you know, just hope?
Yep.
Because we don't know if he's actively trying to sell it, or if he's going to actively try to improve it. We don't know his intentions, and I think that's important as we move forward of what.
There's a sign out there, is that for rent, or is it for, I can't, I thought there was a. Is it just a for-rent sign? No, there was no for-sale. I can't remember when I drove by, what, what sign was out there.
It was just rumor, not secondhand stuff, nothing from the horse's mouth, that he might do something, but I.
But I agree with Tim's, you know, it'd be nice to know.
Absolutely.
Because then we, as the EDA, can hopefully facilitate or even help with what goes, what goes over there.
Yep, yeah.
And so that, all, all those topics we just talked about goes back to.
Some sort of.
Finding that cheerleader.
Right.
So I think that should really, since we know 50% of the budget, you know, we're not going to go down that path, we're going to focus on doing a consultant path, I think that should be, like, that should really be our goal.
Mm-hmm.
Like, next month, let's, I think, Brian, you guys and staff, you guys are going to know, you know, maybe we interview two of these companies, you know, basically off the bat, like, what do we feel, you know, is a good fit?
Well, we can look into two, to see if maybe a representative from each one of them could come here and talk to us.
Sure. Yeah, awesome.
See, if the network, it's all about networking.
Yep, for sure it is.
100%.
I agree.
With that, I'm officially done.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
Anything, Terry? No staff updates? You're quiet.
I'm good, yeah. He said, Terry, nothing from you?
Don't be afraid.
Wow.
It's a surprise.
Yeah, I got.
Mind is in Montana.
All righty, yeah. Anything for you, sir? Nope.
I just hope you do well with your, yeah.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. Get out back to the golf course.
Yep.
That's the main thing. Thank you very much, if nothing else.
Will you get taller?
Will you get taller?
Will you be taller?
I hope so, get six-five hips put in, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if there's advantages anymore, maybe go a little shorter.
Lifters kit put in.
Getting easier in other cars. Thanks. All right, well, I appreciate it, and if there's nothing else, call for a German.
So move.
So move, member Cole, second, member Matthews, that's hard to say.
It is.
Member Matthews.
Maybe I just go back to Thomas, or Thomas, whatever he was called last.
Williams.[1780.13]